And parents. The absence of any brothers and sisters and parents, then you have to keep going out on the family tree to first cousins, second cousins, et cetera. The idea is to locate all the heirs. And depending on, like in this case, some of the people on that family tree is deceased. And so their parents may have had, say, twenty percent, but then if they had uh two children, they would each get ten. So as you go down that family tree, depending on who's deceased, and if you're going to level down, that's what alters the percentages to go from first cousins, second cousins, et cetera. And so we start out on the family tree, and in this case, Ms. Parsons had X number of siblings because she had no children or her parents were deceased. So that's why we expanded our research out to first cousins and second cousins, aunts and uncles, et cetera. And then traced it back and located the living heirs in that family tree. And then contacted them all. And in this case, had acquired the uh interest through our quitclaim deeds and appelle of the ownership from fifty percent of the living heirs. And so that's why Gary got involved, because we were going through a process to get ready for redemption. And uh we're going down the path of doing a quiet title, which we normally don't do, but in this case, because there were heirs that we could not locate, but we knew they existed. That quiet title process would allow us to then redeem it and get clear title. That would be the goal, is to come out the other side with clear title, so we could go forward and clean up the property and do add in value and do whatever's necessary and then turn around and resell.
You had mentioned fifty percent of the heirs.
Yeah.
In this, in this particular case here.
Right.
What about the other fifty percent?
The other fifty percent.
That you can't reach? That you can't find?
No, I actually had contact with one of them, was out in California, and uh just really didn't want anything to do with it. And we encountered that sometimes.
Sure.
It's strange, but it happens.
Not really that strange, I mean, I wouldn't think.
Well.
When you're getting, when you're reaching that far out.
Yeah, but there was financial benefit that you accrued to them, if they would just join in with the other heirs and go forward with this. And we do all the work, and we spend all the money and do all the legal work and everything that's necessary, and they do absolutely nothing. And so, you know, we've had a lot of success for heirs, you know, when it comes out the other end and they get their checks, they're, you know, it was something they didn't expect, and they were very happy. And in this case, what I told Andy is that other fifty percent, I have no intention of getting ahold of them again and saying, hey, you guys need to go claim your portion of the, of the uh surplus. I think they've just pretty much wiped it off and not gonna do anything. But we felt like the heirs that we were working with, they want to continue to go forward because they want to at least get some benefit out of this. And of course, like I said, we normally, normally it doesn't go this route. We normally redeem the property and acquire it, and the whole circumstances surrounding that, and quite frankly, it was, my opinion, was illegally blocked from redeeming it. But that's, I'm not gonna get into that.
So the fifty percent that nobody wants anything to do with.
Was it actually fifty percent or fifty percent that you was only able to contact of the heirs that you found for that?
Uh, well, you know, we do considerable research into the family tree, and these were the uh the heirs that were identified. And most of them had been deceased, and these were the ones that were identified.
But you mentioned though fifty percent that weren't deceased, is what I thought I heard.
Right, right. Of the ones that were identified as still living.
You only commented on one in California that didn't want to be there.
Uh, the others were in Texas. Uh, there was a total of four of them that uh, and the, and the one that I had dealt with uh, felt like he was speaking for the rest and didn't, they didn't, they didn't want anything to do with it. That would have been the uh, the heirs of Charles Lewis Selvage, who was one of the siblings of uh, or one of uh aunts, uh uncle, it was an uncle. As you'll see here, I, I think you have maybe something similar to this.
No, I did not. Doesn't look. No, I, I, I don't have that.
That kind of lays out the family tree and, and you know, who was, had children who had uh living heirs and, and so, and that's a process that, like I said, we've done many times in multiple counties without any issues.
So I think, Eric, you had a question, and uh so uh, if and or when these funds are released, and I'm gonna encourage a process uh for that, because I think there's still time, would be that uh any of those funds that would be unclaimed at the end of that three years, then those would be sent to the school district.
And what I had mentioned at first, actually, because we haven't turned involved in this, is we'd want the funds to be released to the law office, because then they would disperse them accordingly.
So with that, with this particular property stuff that you're talking about, I mean, was there any will, testament, or anything ever written up?
No will.
Nothing and stuff there?
Probably nothing.
This particular person had nobody but just friends?
Yeah.
Around, around in our community?
Pardon?
Around in our community?
Yeah.
Because it didn't seem like any of what I've seen there is living close to Leckley County.
Yeah, yeah, and we, and we get down to, and we don't normally, most of the time, our heirs will be uh children or siblings usually. But in this particular case, we had to go back up the family tree, and we do that, because all the cousins and aunts and uncles, usually they're far from, in different parts of the country and.
You have any other questions?
I don't at this time, no.
Okay. Eric, any? So uh, I appreciate you being here. I've, I've learned some additional uh facts this morning. Uh, I don't wanna leave you with the impression, nor uh Gary, that in any ways the commission's stonewalling this. Uh, I, I appreciate your um, your being here, your demeanor, your tone, and just helping us to understand better from, from your perspective. However, upon advice from my prosecuting attorney, which provides legal service to the county, uh, we will decline to do anything uh on this at this time. And so I would encourage you to contact our prosecuting attorney to see what process, what that, what that progress or what that process going forward would, would be like. Uh, I'm not an attorney, I, I tell everyone, I, I, I try and be as diligent in my understanding of statutes and everything that comes before me. But uh it's, it's uh, I generally don't go against uh someone that's given me legal ad- advice. So for that reason, uh I would, I would encourage you to uh visit with our prosecuting attorney, Amy Folsom, and just determine what, what we need to do to go, to go forward. Uh, so uh with, with that, Tony, again, I, I appreciate you being here. Uh, and, and we'll keep an open, open mind to whatever we, whatever we receive from the prosecuting attorney.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Kasten, C-K-A-S-T-E-N-S, I believe. Hartman, Hartman, just as confident, and I can. Kastens, I'm sorry, I'm kinda stumbling in my speech a little bit. Okay, the next item we have on the uh agenda is the uh senior tax freeze applications for approval.
Yeah, it looked like there was like a hundred and twenty-six of those that came in. Looked like we had a few more uh new applications just go around than what we had in the past there, so. But I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the hundred and twenty-six tax freeze applications as presented in front of us.
Okay, yes, a motion second to approve the senior tax applications as presented in for a discussion, seeing on all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I oppose, same song. Application's approved. All right, we're in general county business.
What we've got going on with this Live to Give Hope?
That's, that'll be on next, next week's agenda.
Okay, I just learned this, that's the second time it's been on my desk, so. I wasn't sure.
That's probably because of, because I don't remember the first time putting it on your desk.
Okay. So, okay, fair enough. We, we get told sometimes where things might get displaced.
So what, what, what I try and do, Joe, is when I have something coming in that's not on the agenda, maybe coming up, I'm trying my best to um give you and Eric that information, so you can study it. Uh, maybe a week in advance, if I have that much notice, and if I don't have that much notice, uh and I put it in your uh, in your box outside your office.
As much notice as you can is always appreciated, for sure.
For sure, some days I get a week's notice, some days I get a day's notice, and, and uh, and that's why we pick up in general county business as well.
You bet. Uh, got a deal here, uh, maybe you can help with some clarity and, and stuff like that, uh where we have a gentleman requesting for a private cemetery?
Uh huh, yeah.
Something there, yeah, can we elaborate a little bit more on that, on how that process goes?
Yeah, so I, I think statutes maybe are two twenty-eight, no, that's, that's maybe Roden Bridge. Yeah, there's, there's statutes that uh guide the process by which a family cemetery can be established, okay? So just some bullet points on that, it has to be less than an acre, okay? Uh, the public has access to it during normal, uh, I'm gonna say daylight or business hours. So if a family decides to do this, uh, the public does have a, a right to access that, that cemetery.
Any in the whole public?
Yes.
During daylight hours?
Yeah, and if you remember back many, many, many years ago, and this probably, I don't know whether it's a family cemetery or not, but someone had gated off a uh, a cemetery, and, and it went through the, through the court system and, and the family and where the cemetery association prevailed, because you can't, you can't lock people out. So um, so anyway, and then uh it should be surveyed as well. Uh, and then that uh, that individual, that family can do a quitclaim deed to the county, which as you know, quitclaim deed doesn't warrant anything, it's, it's not a warranty deed, it's a, it's a quitclaim deed. So anybody can come in, as Jennifer would tell you, and, and they, and they can record anything. Uh, the significance of that is, uh, over time, we've had inquiries, where is, where's the cemetery located at? And it's been hard to know, even sometimes the funeral homes, uh, being a great resource, haven't been able to help us locate a particular cemetery. We even have a case where there was a cemetery that maybe the land had been cleared, uh, because at some point, and some of the uh, some of the uh, the stones, the headstones were uh maybe just even removed or, or put together in a, in a, in a, in a certain group, okay? So uh, so it's, it's beneficial for that family to have a record, because there might be somebody, heirs a hundred years later, that want to know where great grandpa uh loose was uh interred at. So uh, that doesn't obligate us, as the statutes will tell you, that obligates us to nothing. Uh, we're not responsible for maintenance, we're not responsible for upkeep or, or any of that. It's simply a way that the public and or the family would know uh where that cemetery is located. Uh, this is probably the third or fourth one in, in my six or seven years here, that, that's uh, that has, has been uh recorded as a family cemetery. We actually get a fair amount of calls on this, uh, where family, you know, they've, they've got their family farm and, and they want mom and dad, or grandma, grandpa, or a spouse to be uh interred there, and, and uh, so I always refer them to the statutes, and I always remind them that the public does have access to it. Because if you put it at the back for, at the corner of the back forty, that means people can walk through your forty acres to get back here to the back, where the cemetery's located. So I wa- I wanted to make as much uh, to think about the process when I'm asked about it, to help them make the decision that their family is sensitive to and, and with as much thought and knowledge. But, but that's all it is, Joe, it was just a uh, just a, a quitclaim deed uh that was recorded and binds us to nothing. And I can't remember the statute, but Linda has those.
Good, yeah, so we don't have to worry about making a road, maintaining a road, any of that.
There's no obligation on us what, whatsoever.
Okay.
None.
That's what I was wondering, because I do know where there was another old family cemetery, but since then, it has been on a place I used to hunt and stuff, just outside the edges of town and everything. I've been visiting all those old tombstones.
Yeah.
And stuff, so, and I knew there was no road into it or anything else, so I didn't know what really to do, thank you, Kyler.
There might have been, might have been one, one time, Joe, who, who knows? I mean, it's like uh, you know, you, you drive some of our county roads, and you see where the, where the DAPA deals are coming up, and, and you almost see where that was the, that was the path leading up to the whole house, that was no longer there, right? So I'm sure there's cemeteries out here that uh.
That's where you see them great, the biggest trees that we got in the county, too.
Yeah, and you've got a cemetery on your side that's uh grown up, and uh the issue comes before us from time to time, whether or not we, we maintain that, or whether we do that once a year, as we go back to the uh, because we, out of uh, out of uh courtesy, to the um cemeteries, we grade those prior to Memorial Day. And uh, you've got one that's, that's overgrown out there, and, and I don't know that anybody takes care of that cemetery anymore. Which are probably familiar.
Yeah, but most of the people that took care of that are no longer able to, and the ones younger don't seem to have as much involvement in that anymore.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, still in general county business. Let's see, I forgot to put it on the agenda, Joe, that our auction's Saturday, is that right? Is that this Saturday?
April fifth.
April, so a week, a week from Saturday, okay.
Yeah, so we're hoping to get the.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
Hoping to get the sale bill finalized today and everything, it's been a little bit rough going. We'll get things compiled, get things straightened up, next time you go over there, things are moved around in different piles, and some things are missing, so. It's, okay, so finalize that sale bill today and go from there.
Okay, uh, and then I had a question of, of, of either one of you regarding, uh, and I guess, Eric, I'll start with you. Uh, do you know for certain that we are taking pictures of the storm damage?
I do not know for certain.
Okay. Okay, all right. Uh, okay. Do we know if Conservation Rock is being hauled?
I heard yesterday that they're, they're starting.
Started that, okay. So Leanna, you're in the room, someone asked you, do you know if any pictures are being taken of the storm damage cleanup?
As far as the first round of warrants that we had, I'm aware of the images that were taken.
Okay.
Uh, they were done with cleanup last Thursday. So they were well into the cleanup process by the time it was made where they were just needed.
They probably not through you, but they were made aware of uh before that, but probably not.
There is, there is some pictures that I have, that was from that first round, from that Friday evening. The, very few, but I do have a few of those uh, and everything that was actually sent to me from that cleanup. That's all the pictures that I would have of that. Uh, so just a few trees that, which I showed to you, and so I believe last week, I believe it was, or whenever it was, I showed you those pictures.
Well, the relevance of that question is that uh, if the governor, if there is a FEMA declaration issued, there'd be an opportunity for us to uh submit uh reimbursement for our, our time there. And uh, and we have to have pictures to support that, so.
Yeah, so I, I can get those pictures over to wherever I need to, as far as what pictures I have.
John did call me yesterday and said he was traveling through some, on this last little storm.
Okay.
Do I need to call him and ask him, or go back through and take some pictures of that?
That would be my recommendation. As far as I'm aware, he drove south right by the Caribbean Spirit, because Clifford had called him.
Yeah.
And had just pushed stuff off the road, John did say that it was pretty bad out there, and that it's something we're gonna have to operate about taking care of. I will say John is gone today.
Okay, that is, that is a different event, so I don't even know if they were.
Unless they included.
Qualified.
They consider him separate.
Yeah, they would be separates.
All right. So while we're still in general county business, I'll leave that open, uh, but that is what I just distributed was the, what we've been working on in-house, that I've asked the uh Leckley County Record to uh see if they can make uh an add out of that. And there at the bottom were some of those uh facts, I think, Eric, that maybe.
Yeah.
You mentioned that might help explain.
I like him.
Yes, not a bad deal, I see the shadowing underneath the truck, which basically gives you a shadow of the truck, I don't think it really simulates the potholes that they help create and blow out as well.
Well, I, I understand that there may be a special edition distributed at some point as well. Okay, so uh with, with that, I'll, I'll keep, keep you informed as the day goes on, um, what a proof might look like for the uh, for the newspaper. Okay, all right, so uh, any, anything else, general county business at this point?
I believe so.
I will uh bring up, uh, we, we talked about a job description for Roden Bridge Foreman. You know, when you, when you Google job descriptions, you can get, you can find a lot of information out there. So I, I, I did that yesterday, and uh I just printed one out, so it can be a, a starting point for us, okay? But, but if you, but if you go online and you just Google uh, uh county Roden Bridge Foreman job description, is how I did it, uh, it would bring up, there were some in Missouri, some in other states, this particular one came from out of state. And uh, and we could, we could take one, two, or three of those, and we can make it our own, okay? But this one was just one that seemed like had different bullet points, and so I just wanna distribute that. I, I haven't read the whole thing, it's just a starting point, so that we can uh um get ours written up uh sooner than later. And so I think this is a priority for the commission, and if we need to do a work-study session, I, I need to get that uh posted. Uh, when we come together on Tuesdays, uh, we're taking care of action items, items that uh, that uh, that need to be taken care of. Uh, uh, the urgency here, I think, is real, and we should entertain the thought of a work-study session. And uh, I would encourage the commission to review this, others that you find online. And if you wanna use AI, you can even do that, I chose not to. But AI would be happy to help put together a job description as well. I opt not to do that. But uh, so I, I would like your thoughts uh as to a, a work-study session regarding this. And that's for review and then decision on work study. As part of that, we also received information, last week, we discussed the, the uh possibility of having a, a, I'm gonna call it a, a permitting process for driveway pipe installations. And I think we need to give that a little bit more thought, uh, because I think how it's presented and the ability to um, for it to uh achieve what we hope to achieve, uh, we're gonna have to determine, and I think this may be a, a Amy question as well, whether or not it's a permit. So let me, let me explain my thoughts on that before I really, uh, before I really have thought it through to the end here. So if we just said that somebody calls and they want to uh, they're, they're uh building a home, or they're, they're moving uh a pre-manufactured home onto a, a county road, and they need a call for it installed, we know what the current process is. They uh, they, they call, we send out a Roden Bridge employee, uh, they go out and inspect the site, they make the recommendation for the uh pipe, and then there, and then that individual uh goes and purchases their, their pipe. If it's purchased locally, we go pick up the pipe, we bring it to the job site, and we uh, we install it, and we'll use uh, you know, usually approximately a load of rock, okay? And uh, and then we maintain that pipe in perpetuity. So if our grader uh, you know, hits it, it happens, no removal or just grating the road, and we eventually have to replace that pipe, the county uh absorbs that. Uh, so as I, as I think about this process, and as I've heard before, a point to be considered here is, well, I'll just pay somebody to install it myself, okay? Uh, I'm not gonna pay the county, whatever the county decides it might be, I'm just gonna do it myself. Well, uh, that possibly undermines the, our ability to adequately maintain that road. It's, it's, it's not the proper diameter, it's not gonna carry water flow, it's uh installed in the uh, in, in not the right location, uh, whatever the, the case may be. So that would be the reason why I think the commission has historically said, we will install it, because we know what it's gonna take to maintain it proper, right? So with that, then I'm thinking about how, how would this work? Uh, so I think, okay, if we had a permitting process that we require, and I need to, we, we need to decide what that would look like, and if we can do it, uh, and we, and we have a, a permit fee. Okay, and that permit fee is, let's say, a hundred and fifty dollars, okay? But in that, in, but included in that is, if we can, that includes the county installing that pipe, not purchasing the pipe, but installs that pipe, okay? But if it's a permit, then I, as an individual, decide I wanna do it myself. Well, the, you'll purchase the permit, and you'll have to follow these guidelines for, for it to be installed. And then you have to think about how's all that enforced. So, so there's some parts here, but uh as, as we have discussed, uh, if we wanna, wanna pursue this, what we know is the, the cost of material, the cost of time, what's, what's been analyzed for us, uh, we're, we're incurring, and should this be looked at? We're we're incurring and should this be looked at like as a fee to the individual that's. That's acquired that property or or building on that property or whatever, just like they would pay a water district. An installation fee for a meter or they would pay the co-op. A fee for installing the meter, do do we, do we perceive this as a utility? Much like those two examples. And and I would suggest to some extent, it is a user fee. And it's not, and since we're maintaining in perpetuity, then the the residents of the county. Although many are going to be grandfathered in, right, hundreds of them grandfathered in. But but moving forward, then the remaining county residents are subsidizing the cost of this one pipe install. So that's just some of the things I toss out there for discussion before we establish this this process. If we chose, if we choose to to do that, so. But this is something I think is work-study as well, that's why I mentioned that. It as well, that would be something that I think we could gain, we could gather information from legal and we could also. You know, give us time to to think about it. You know, we entertain thoughts if if we are going to pursue it, then I will, I will, I will pursue it with with legal to see what. That permitting process might look look like within within our county.
So we need to show an interest, for sure.
Me too. I'm sure it has happened where somebody decides they're not asking anybody for anything. And they have installed a culvert on a county road. Is there? I feel like. If that happens, we need to not take that. Because if it isn't installed correctly. And it isn't the right size, we shouldn't be responsible for that pipe.
Absolutely, but with that, if it's not the right size, not carrying the flow, not installed in the right direction and everything for the flow of that, it eats into the roads. You know, we've, we've, we've got a couple of those out there that that has happened, a couple of them have been changed and fixed. But that that does fall back on us to keep that road and go from there, so therefore we have to do something up from that flow. To divert some of that water as well and some of that debris for us it will continue to eat the road. So that's, that's the issue with that, even if they do do that, even though we're not going to maintain that pipe, if something happens to it. They're didn't care to start with. That's, that's the end result is the reason why we have to have the proper size installed, like you said, instead of just putting in. Installed correctly because it benefits the road, which benefits the rest of the taxpayer and citizens, not just that one individual.
And and we might even look at. Our. I'm going to put quotation marks around this, our policy regarding. Let's say utilities that cut through one of our paved roads. Across one of our roads or use the easement, I think occasionally we have. Calls where we have a contractor that's installed fiber or something else and and perhaps they they've not cleaned it up quite. Quite like they found it, most of the time they do, but we know cases where they haven't. So this might be to 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 look at that and is this, is this part of that? You know. Is is there anything else we would require those contractors at the same time? So not to mix the two together, but in order to be efficient with whatever we we might, we might. Want to pursue, maybe we'll look at that in conjunction with this. Not to confuse the two, but just to see if there's any merit in having one form. Instead of having maybe multiple, multiple forms. Not sure there's any merit to it, not sure what I can find, but I think we do have some some documents. Or should have if we don't. Okay. Okay, so we'll hold that for work stay, all right? Public comments items listed on the agenda.
Oh, so I had two for the use tax, my first one was if the voters decide to pass the county tax. Are we going to how like they start to see the impacts of its passage?
That's a good question, Jack, and. There's a, there's a timeframe, which I think I'm going to lean on Linda here to address that, but but. When the use tax is. Approved by the voters, and I'm not advocating for that, I'm just saying when, that that could be in April, that could be whenever, but but. When that use tax would be. Implemented. Then that information goes to Jefferson City. And then Jefferson City sends it to the. Entities that would be responsible for collecting that, I'm going to guess it's October. But I I but I, but I know that I'm guessing on that, but there is a gap there and then those collections would start to. Occur, those online vendors would send that to Jefferson City. And then once they receive it, we get those permitances monthly. So at the earliest, I would think later this year, so to answer your question, the impact. That would have on on those on our county, it would probably be something that would, we would budget in next year. So we, but at at that point, we'd have some. Some idea as to what that amount would look like and then we could start budgeting that.
Okay, and my second question was, I know that in the ballot language, it specifies that the fund can be used for law enforcement and other. Areas, is there the possibility within that language that it might be allocated to other funds and would there be?
Sure. Yeah, so here's, here's, and Joe didn't jump out up, out of his seat when I mentioned it last Friday. And I don't think Eric's heard this yet, but here's my, my suggestion, our ballot language states that it'd be used for law enforcement. And county road improvement, maintenance and general county services. I'm proposing a forty forty twenty. Distribution, forty percent of whatever that amounts for law enforcement, forty percent for Roden Bridge. And twenty percent for those general county services now, so so when the question would be asked, well, what's general county services? That's, that's, that's not very specific, so how I, how I responded to that last Friday was. If you live in Lakewood County, you're impacted by general county services. You pay taxes, you send in an assessment list, you record a deed, you 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 vote, you register for vote. If you call nine one one, we dispatch a deputy. If you call in, we respond with Roden Bridge inquiries. So if you use the, what I refer to as the other end of the building. Where you have the services, like our, our prosecutor's caseload is. Is. It sometimes. Gets pretty bogged down because because of that caseload. So general county services could be keeping up with the cost of inflation. We know that we incurred approximately an eighty thousand dollar increase last year in property and casualty insurance. We we know all those costs of doing business has increased just like our, our, our family budgets at home. So that's why I'm proposing the forty forty twenty and then how we're held accountable. Is by that action, by the ballot language, because it says we will distribute it to law enforcement. And to county road and bridge and then general county services, so that's the cleanest way that I believe. I have thought through to look at, let's say, let's say it brings in a million dollars, okay? Then this commission will be obligated to follow the ballot language. That four hundred thousand of that would be then directed to law enforcement. Four hundred thousand to county road and bridge. Maintenance, upkeep, improvement, and then twenty percent to offset those inflationary factors. That provide those general county services. So that's the first that 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 was, that was my thoughts, it would be up to this body, but but statutorily. By what we've put on the ballot, we know that we that we will allocate it to law enforcement and road bridge. And that's the formula that I think people then can look at and they can look at our twenty twenty-five budget. And then they can look at our twenty twenty-six budget and they would, it would be. In there so that they could hold us accountable to that ballot language. Do you have any thoughts on my formula?
Is that, I like it. You know, as far as that goes, because that that would be right that way, it does show some type of how the allocations are going to go there and I, and I like that.
That's all the questions.
Okay, all right, we'll move into routine business, Linda, what you got for us? And then while you're initially signing off on those, are there any questions on the warrants that were paid?
No.
Eric, do you have any questions on on the warrants?
No.
Then I have public comments, items not listed on the agenda.
I'd like to come forward to the commission regarding the personnel issue.
Okay. Personnel issue, then we might need to go into closed session. Okay, all right, so I need a motion to enter closed session for personnel.
I'll make a motion to enter closed session for personnel issue.
Have a motion second to enter closed session for personnel issue, any further discussion, seeing none, I need a roll call vote.
Joe.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Yes, okay, we're now in.